There's some beans with us withdrawn.
How's everybody doing tonight? Hey Sean. How you doing, everybody?
Hi Sean.
I think we're gonna get through this nice and quick tonight. Is everybody ready to go?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
He's the full chair.
Yes.
Okay, are we live?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening, welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Yarmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Sean Igoe, I'm the Vice Chairman of the Board. Today's date is February 22nd, 2024, and we have five matters on our petition tonight. Our first matter is Petition 5081, James and Deborah Costas, Trustees of the Red Clover Trust Nominee Trust, Property Location 31 Narrows Lane, South Yarmouth, Mass. This is in an R40 district, and the applicant seeks a special permit under 104.3.2 Subparagraph 2 or 3, And/or a variance from Section 203.5 for rear and side setback to construct an in-ground swimming pool. I received a letter today from their counsel, Paul Tardif, of Yarmouth Port. The letter reads as follows: Dear Chairman Igoe, As you know, this office represents James and Deborah Costas, Trustees of the Red Clover Nominee Trust, and owner of the property at 31 Narrows Lane, South Yarmouth, Mass. As you also know, the petitioner has filed an application for hearing seeking a variance to allow for the installation of an in-ground swimming pool which would encroach into the side and rear setback at the property, the hearing for which is scheduled for this evening, February 22nd, 2024. At this time, my client has authorized me to request that its application be withdrawn without prejudice. I thank you for your assistance in this matter, very truly yours, Paul R. Tardif. Is anybody prepared to make a motion to allow the petitioner to withdraw without prejudice?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Second.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Yeah, Dick.
John, did you?
Mr. needs you.
Second it?
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries five to nothing.
Next matter is...
Petition number 5086, Stephen Hetzel, Doing Businesses Louis Bay Builders, 60 Bayberry Road, West Yarmouth, Mass. It's in an R5 zoning district. The applicant seeks to modify the existing variance number 5036, dated August 16th, 2023, and/or a new variance from Section 203.5 for maximum building coverage to allow lot coverage of .8 square feet. Is Mr. Hetzel... Good evening, Mr. Hetzel.
Good evening, Sean, how are you?
Good evening, Steve, can you hear me?
I'm right here, I can hear you just fine. I think...
Is that on?
Okay.
So this is on, yeah.
Can you hear him okay, Sean? Or do we need to check the mic?
I think you just need to speak directly to them.
Hold on one second.
We can hear you.
Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
I think so, yes, although my... I always have problems with my wifi down here, I'm gonna have to talk to these people.
You must have AT&amp;T.
Uh, I think I do. Okay, so I'm looking at your plan here, and I think it's fairly self-explanatory. When you did your certified plot plan, it came out as .8 feet above the lot coverage that we approved you for last time, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so you're seeking a variance for that? All right. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I think that what might have been overlooked was a couple of overhangs for a bump-out window over the garage, which added to the square footage for the as-built, and I think that's what ran it over.
Oh, okay.
The shed that we added, that we got the approval for, fell within the guidelines of less than 150 square feet, so...
Okay.
I think we were over four square feet on the shed, but it was still within the 150 square feet allowed.
Right, okay. All right. Any questions? I guess we'll go to the board. Dick, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
So it's not on the basis of the shed, it's on the basis of the main structure? That you're...
Yes, yes.
And the shed is up? I think I could see it from the back of the house, but...
You could walk around.
I didn't, I didn't. But you think the bump-outs for the windows and... You think that's what did it, for the engineering standpoint?
Yes, I spoke with Kieran Haley from BSE Group, and he said that's pretty much what happened there.
Okay. I don't have anything else, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Oh. Jay, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
John?
No, no questions, Sean, thank you.
Barbara?
No, no questions.
Okay, all right. I don't see any correspondence in the file. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the microphone. Seeing none. Does anybody who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition, please come to the microphone? And seeing none. We're gonna close this...
Just one second.
Okay.
You're just, your name and...
Sure. Tom Maloney, 30 Louis Bay Boulevard, 34 Louis Bay Boulevard.
Okay. What would you like to tell us?
Well, we opposed this in the summer. We just think it's dumping large structures on a small plot. I understand the building's up. Going back through the plans, what was submitted for the July hearing, it looks like the shed grew an extra inch on either side. I understand it's up, it's not coming down. So we're just here to state our opposition. The original plan was fourteen... I'm sorry. 10 feet by 14 feet, 5 inches. I think I stated in the summer, it was a recycled plan, it was all blacked out. The plans available now had a date of June, and it was just a... It's an extra inch, but we're still opposing it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, we're gonna close the hearing then to the public discussion, and for a board discussion, go-to-board discussion. Anybody wanna begin a discussion or make a motion?
I'll begin a discussion if you'd like, Mr. Chair. I just, you know, I don't like to see...
Any thoughts?
Can you hear me all right? Can you hear me, Sean?
Yes, I can, thank you.
I hate to see somebody come back after we've already granted relief. But it seems like, in the words of our esteemed Chair tonight, you know, this is de minimis. And I think it's a very small error in the calculations that I think put him in this position. And I think that the building inspector should be congratulated for picking it up and having him come back to us. But I don't think it's anything that we wanna penalize him for for trying his best and maybe the calculations didn't include those extra overhangs and windows that didn't show up maybe in the first plan, so... I have no problem with it. And for the sake of expediency, maybe I should make a motion to grant the petition as submitted? Would you like that, Mr. Chair?
I have a question, just before you do that, Sean. Is this... I'm just curious, is this something that we modify the old approval, or is this a new variance? Can you hear me?
No.
Go back to your phone.
He's going back to his phone.
Can you hear me, Sean?
Hello, Sean?
Just dropped, so hang on.
This is what happened last time.
Wait.
Here he comes. He missed all of your... He missed all of your presentations.
He didn't miss much.
Sorry, folks, bear with us for a second, we're going over again. There he is.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, all right. Now, Dick, I did hear your comments. Anything else you'd like to add at this time?
No, I'm fine. And if you didn't hear, I quoted one of your often-used slogans of de minimis, so I want you to know that we've picked that up now, and I think it's probably appropriate in this case.
I did hear you say that.
Sean, I did have a question, and you couldn't hear me. My question was, do you feel this is going to be something we just modify a previous variance, or is this a new variance?
I think we modify the previous variance. I think this actually would have been picked up originally, but this was just kind of an error. And I think we can just modify Petition 5036 where we to grant the relief.
So would that mean that we're just increasing the percentage of coverage to something like 27% or something? I don't know what it would require.
Yeah, well, it would be... Well, it might not be that.
26.4% is what's approved.
That's 27.2%.
Is that the new calculation, Steve?
Yeah. That's from... That's from BSE Group.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, so the percentage changed, not the square footage, is what you're saying? Okay.
Lot coverage, yes.
Right, on here, it said .8 square feet, so... I was gonna ask that question, but I assumed it was what you wrote. So that, just to clarify, Sean, it was on the submission and request, it was .8 square feet, but it's really .8% coverage is what you're looking for.
All right, we're gonna call that a scribnezera.
Yes.
On the application.
On the app...
The new application said .8. Square feet.
So anyway, you wanna make a motion? Anybody else?
Anybody have anything else? If not, I'll make a motion to grant as presented, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Do we have a second to that motion?
A second.
Sean.
Second it? Okay. Any discussion on the motion? I would only echo Dick's comments that I think it's de minimis as well. I think if we were talking about a zoning administrator's duties, this would be one that would fall into that category. One where it's a small error primarily in measurements at one point, and now it's been corrected, but it's a very minor amount that we're going up, so... I do believe, though, that they meet the criteria for a variance. And if there's no further discussion on the matter, everybody in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Steve, as you know, once this is filed with the clerk's office, there's a 20-day appeal period. After that, you can see Dolores and pick up your special... Oh, excuse me, your variance, recorded at the Registry of Deeds, and please bring a copy back for our records. Okay, thank you very much, and have a nice night.
Thank you, Board.
Okay. All right. Give me one second here, folks. All right, the next petition is Petition number 5087, Kalen Orr, Doing Businesses MSFTS. MSFTS. Property Location 24 Easy Street, Yarmouth Port, Massachusetts. It's in a B3 zoning and a APD district. The applicant seeks a special permit per 202.5 for N11 use in a B3 zoning district, and is seeking an APD waiver. Good evening, could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, good evening, Kalen Orr and its misfits.
Misfits, okay, I think we... I think we... Did we keep eyes out of there?
You like it?
I do. Misfit. All right. Okay, Kalen, why don't you tell us a little bit about what you wanna do over there?
Okay, so I am looking to open a small personal and group training fitness facility. So no big machines, just an open space with some weights, some kettlebells, some mats, and... Starting out about three to five people per group. So I am looking to carry six parking spots, as I'm coded as a gymnasium, or a assembly. Yeah.
Okay. And your landlord has allocated you those spots?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
And... Now, you're looking for an APD waiver, I just wanted to ask you a few questions. Are you planning on keeping any hazardous materials on site?
Nope.
What type of cleaning products, if any, would you have? Just household cleaning products?
Yes, and I'm actually going to look into even better than that, like using essential oils to clean yoga mats and things like that. So as little as possible, less than one gallon.
Okay, okay, all right. What I'm gonna do right now is go to the board and see if they have any questions. Barbara, do you have any questions for our petitioner?
Well, first of all, I get a kick out of the name of the street, Easy Street.
Yes, right? Easy Street's perfect, it's my home.
Yeah, I had a question, I was looking at your Facebook page.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yay.
Yeah, I saw you on Facebook. So when I was looking on Facebook, it looked like you had a lot of clients.
Yes, yes.
So I'm concerned about the parking.
Yep.
If that many come.
So that is the reason why I'm opening my own facility, because I can't... I work in these facilities that have 20 people in the room, I can't keep eyes on them. I hate those big classes. So I am specifically designing my own business plan to avoid large group, and I'm gonna have appointment-only. So everyone has to sign up ahead of time, wait lists, things like that.
So you have a limit of how many people can be in?
Absolutely.
One class, and so what do you anticipate that will be?
I wanna start, I like three to five, but I wanna grow a little bit. We'll see, but small group.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, John, do you have questions for the petitioner?
Well, yeah, that was my question. How big do you plan on growing? How many people would you anticipate? You must have an idea.
The way that I grow in my business is more appointments, more classes, more class times, not bigger.
Okay, so it's three to five people?
Yeah. And then I just keep adding more times. Right now, in my life, I teach 20 classes a week, no problem. So...
So you don't anticipate needing more parking down the road?
Down the road, and if I had it, it would be great, but this is, parking is the one limitation that I have wherever I go. And luckily, I have the business model where I can customize due to that, so...
This six right now would be adequate.
Perfect, and the spot is perfect.
Convenient.
It is.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Jay, do you have any questions?
Just a couple. On your submission, you mentioned eight to 10 max.
Well, yeah, well, when I first filled out that paperwork, the builders had said they were going to try to build a parking lot.
Well, that was my second question.
Yeah, they said they were gonna try to build that when I brought it up with the Commissioner, he said no.
I was like, where are they gonna put it?
Right, so there's like a gravel over whatever, so that's when I wrote that. If they build it, cool, if they don't, I'm fine.
Okay. In the meantime, you'll limit yourself to that?
Absolutely.
Four, three to five?
Easy, yep.
Okay. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Okay.
No.
No.
I got one of my clients right there.
Hey, good.
And I recognize you, I think, do you go to Mid-Cape?
I used to.
That's where I recognized you from. I worked there for five years.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Okay. I've got a couple, what are your hours of operation?
So they can be wherever I want. So right now, at home and on paper, I've got 8 to 11, and then I've got 5 to 7. When I grow, I'll expand early in the morning, and I probably won't go later than 7:00 PM, but morning and night.
Okay, you're in a very unique spot over there in that I don't think there's anybody around that you'd bother.
I know, I love it so much.
I'm not sure that, at least I would have very much... Of course.
Yes, great. It's so great because of the music, I wanna be able to play music, and that's cut me out of a lot, a lot of places.
Sean, I just had one more question.
Yes.
Go ahead.
There's a trailer currently in one of the spots where you're talking about using for parking in the future. Is that trailer going away? It looks like a construction?
Yeah, so, yes. And like the landlords communicating with you, we're working on the spots. So we have a couple of options for spots. A couple more people said yes also, and they agreed to like rent them to me after hours, and I thought I might need to get that all on paper for you, but we have a lot of contingencies.
It's not necessarily gonna be these specific spots.
Correct, yeah, we have a couple of, a lot of people said yes, so I could have access to more if I needed it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is the other space rented?
They're all rented but this one.
They're all what?
They're all rented but this one.
All but that one? Okay, and are they businesses that would see people coming in and out? Or are they mostly just there in the morning and gone for the day?
Yeah, next door, the two in MyBay are just storage.
Just storage?
Yep.
Okay, good.
I know, it's amazing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Is there anyone in our audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the microphone. Seeing none? Is there anybody in our audience that wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, please come to the microphone. And seeing none? Okay, we're gonna close it to the public and begin board deliberation. Does anybody wanna begin a discussion, or is anybody prepared to make a motion?
I don't have anything to say, I'd be glad to make a motion to approve as requested.
Okay, motion by Jay to approve. Second, was that you, Dick?
Yep.
Okay, seconded by Dick. Any discussion on the motion? The only thing that I would add to it is I think she's fine down there. We do have to approve an APD waiver, but I don't think that's the type of business that we're gonna be necessarily worried about contaminating the groundwater. She's at best going to use just households cleaners that you're gonna find in Stop &amp; Shop or anywhere. And there's plenty of those in the APD. It's not any type of an industrial use. It's really just a gym. And I suspect that she'll be a good steward of the groundwater anyway. So I think we can grant that waiver. I think she meets the criteria, and I don't think there's gonna be any undue nuisance hazard or congestion over there. She's by herself, really. She's got plenty of room, so if she wants to play her music, I don't see her bothering anybody, any of the neighbors, so... I do think she...
Sean, is that part of the special permit, or do you need a motion to approve that also?
On the APD waiver?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we're gonna need a, I think we're gonna need a separate motion on the APD waiver as well.
Is that the Board of Health one?
Yeah.
I did that.
You have that?
Well, we have to grant you a waiver.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Everything is self-contained in the building? Nothing is outside in the summer or spring or fall?
That's right.
So do you wanna vote on the special permit, and then we'll make a motion?
We'll vote on the permit, and then we'll do the APD waiver. Okay, if there's no further discussion on the special permit, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries 5-0. On the question of the APD waiver, is anybody prepared to make a motion to approve the APD waiver?
I'll make a motion to approve the waiver.
Do I have a second? Dick, second in the motion, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously. Kalen, after this is clocked with the town clerk, after it's drafted the decision, 20 days must elapse. That's an appeal period. After which, you can come over and see Dolores, she will give you your special permit. You need to take it over to the possible Registry of Deeds and record it, and please bring us back a copy for our records.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Do you have any further questions?
Nope.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you so much, Dolores, thank you for printing this out for me.
Thanks, guys.
Good luck.
The next matter on our agenda is Petition 5088, Konstantin Alexandroff, Doing Businesses Creative Barnes Inc., Property Location, I guess it's Creative Barnes, Inc., but I don't know if this is a business that we're talking about or not. 47 Bayberry Road, West Yarmouth, Mass. The property's in an R25 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit per 104.3.2 Subparagraph 2 and/or a variance from Section 203.5 for side setback relief to replace existing deck and change direction of stairs to deck. Is the petitioner here? Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you identify yourself with a record, please?
My name is Nemanja Zurkovic, I'm representing Konstantinos. He's unable to arrive today or be present.
All right, okay. And he gave you permission to speak on his behalf?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right, tell us a little bit about what you wanna do. I think we have a plan in front of us. It shows... Well, tell us what you wanna do, you wanna replace the existing deck?
Correct. We're removing and replacing the existing deck, keeping the same footprint, everything stays the same. We just want to rotate the staircase towards the front of the property, looking towards the street, 'cause it's not practical this way. And, yeah, we'll get the deck up to code.
Okay. As a result, you're gonna be 11 feet off the lot line right now. So you're about 3 feet, 11 inches too close. So you're asking...
Sorry.
That's correct?
Yes. I just wanted to add that the other properties are owned by the same family, the property next to it.
Okay, okay, all right. All right, anything else you'd like to tell us at this point?
That would be it.
Okay. All right, we're gonna go to the board for questions. Dick, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
No, I don't think so. I just wanna confirm that... Are the stairs that are going in a longer staircase than the one that's there?
No, it's gonna be the same staircase.
In the sketch that we have, we're showing, you know, like 12 steps on the new one, and it looks like only about seven or eight steps on the old one. Is that just a sketch?
That's just a mistake on the sketch.
Okay, all right. So there's no variance or no difference from the length of the stairway going down? It's just moving it from one side of the deck to the other?
Correct.
Or convenience in access from the deck easier to get to the street?
Correct.
And parking, probably?
Yes.
And the property that the same owners own is next door to, is it the one that's closest to where the...
I have the paper here.
I have a plan, but I don't, I don't have any names on them, so I don't know which... If you're looking at the plan that I have, is it to the right that's closest to those stairs that the same owner owns?
Yes, and they own two more properties up from the, from those two, which is the marshland.
So they're not opposed to this, obviously, since they're butting their property?
Delots.
Yes.
Is it, I couldn't see back in there from the street, but is it, are there any major trees that are going to be affected by this, or?
No, there shouldn't, there shouldn't be any trees, in a way.
So there's no trees in the way that we'll have to come down to accommodate the stairway? All right, I don't see any reason why. It makes a huge difference, particularly if the same property owner owns the parcel immediately adjacent to the property. It doesn't always stay in the same family, but as of now, it is.
Okay. Jay, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
Yes, I think this is a special permit. Doesn't require a variance because it's pre-existing. It's already non-conforming. Would you agree with that, Mr. Chair?
Expansion of a non-conforming use?
Yeah.
It, it, well, yeah, right now, the house is a legally pre-existing, non-conforming structure. It does not conform to the setback on one side. You would actually be creating a new non-conformity, but the house itself doesn't conform, so I think you can't proceed under special permit.
Okay, so that's what I, I assumed it would be, be that. And I don't think it would conform on the side that they're on now anyway with what was existing. It's just going to be like a foot probably or two closer to the sideline.
And the other sideline is way off.
Right, right. And it is a vacant lot. Is it buildable, the lot next door?
I don't think it is. It's marshland.
I thought it was, yeah. It doesn't look like something that could be built on, so yeah, there was no one next door. It was, it was a vacant lot, didn't look buildable. So I'm actually fine with this. I don't think it's a, an issue. So I would be supportive of it.
Okay, thank you. John?
I don't have any questions.
No, no questions. I'm fine. Thank you.
Barbara?
Nope, I think Dick asked great questions. I don't have anything further.
Okay, all right. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the microphone. Seeing none? If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition to this petition, please come to the microphone. Seeing none. Okay. Is there anything that you wish to add, sir, at this time?
No.
Oh, all right. Okay, then we're going to close the hearing to the public and begin board discussion. Is anybody prepared to begin a discussion or make a motion?
I'll make a motion if we don't have any discussion.
Nope, that's fine.
I move to approve petition 5088 with no conditions.
All right, is there a second to the motion?
Yeah, that was as a special permit, Sean.
As a special permit, and so we're going to need another motion for the removal of the...
Request for variance.
Yep, we'll handle that right after this. Okay. All right, so we got a second. Who's second in the motion?
I do.
Dick's second, okay. All right, is there any discussion on the motion? I would agree that we, this is certainly not going to affect anyone, because the right side is unbuildable, and it's, it's wet on that side. So I don't think it's ever going to have any effect to any future neighbor. I think it's one of these things that almost meets the de minimis definition, but it's a little bit more than that. So I do think he meets the criteria under the special permit, and I plan to support it as well. If there's no further, does anybody else wish to have any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously. Now, we have a request for variance relief. Sir, we would ask that you request that we, that you withdraw your request for the variance without prejudice. Okay, that means if you ever needed to ask for it again, you can come back. You're just withdrawing that request tonight because you don't need it. We granted you a permit.
Okay.
Okay, so want to do that?
Yes, I do.
Oh, all right. So there's a request to withdraw the variance relief without prejudice. Do we have a motion?
We do. I'll make the motion to remove the variance request.
Without prejudice?
Without prejudice.
Okay, do we have a second to that?
A second.
Have a second, okay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Okay, that's withdrawn without prejudice. Sir, we granted your special permit. Once the, it's going to take a few days to draft the decision, then it'll be clocked with the town clerk. Once it's clocked with the town clerk, 20 days must elapse. After that 20 days elapses, you can give Dolores a call, or she'll give you a call, one or the other, and let you know that your special permit is ready. You can come pick it up. We need you to take it over to the registry of deeds over in Possible Village and record it. And then after that, bring a copy back to us for our records. Okay?
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
You too. Well, once again, my, my agenda has disappeared. Excuse me, gang, this agenda of mine is very elusive. Okay, this brings us to our last petition, petition number 5089, the town of Yarmouth. The property location is 170 Southshore Drive, South Yarmouth, Mass. It's in an R-25 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit for a 202.5 for P-10 use. In an R-25 zoning district, the applicant seeks a waiver from the requirement for certified site slash plot plan less than two years old. Good evening. Could you identify yourselves with a record, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Mike Judice from CDM Smith, working on behalf of the town.
Okay.
And Jeff Colby, Public Works Director.
Good evening, gentlemen. Could you please tell us about your petition?
Yes, sir. I'll just give you a quick overview. So again, CDM Smith, we're working on the design and implementation of Phase One of the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan. As you may be familiar with, that plan received construction funding at last town, last spring town meeting. The intent of the plan is to address nitrogen contamination in the town's estuaries and to protect the drinking water supply. So Phase One consists of six construction contracts. The first of those contracts is for the water resource recovery facility. They received a variance for that facility from this board a couple months ago for height, height limitation on one of the buildings. In addition to the treatment facility, there are five collection system contracts. So those contracts will provide sewers and pumping stations in each of the areas to be served by Phase One in order to collect the wastewater from each of the individual properties, and then to convey that flow to the treatment facility. There are a total of five pumping stations in Phase One. Four of them are going to be located on town-owned property. The subject of this hearing tonight is for one of those parcels. It's a pumping station that's being proposed at 170 Southshore Drive, which is a northeast corner of Southshore Drive and Pine Grove Road. So it's a vacant town-owned parcel at this point. It's a critical piece of the Phase One infrastructure that's needed to convey flow from all the properties along Southshore Drive and the surrounding neighborhoods up into the collection system and eventually to the treatment facility. I'll just give you a quick overview of the pumping station itself. There are two main components. So this is a submersible pumping station. So there'll be, the first main component is what we call a wet well. So it's basically just an underground concrete structure. Just picture a large manhole, if you will, where all the wastewater that's collected along Southshore Drive will be conveyed and enter into the wet well. There are submersible pumps that sit down in the wastewater itself, and then they'll pump out via a force main, west on Southshore Drive, north up Seaview Avenue, and eventually into the gravity system in Route 28. And from there, it gets conveyed under a future contract up to the treatment facility. The second main component of the pumping station is the control building. You have in your package architectural plan that shows the elevations of that control building. It's essentially, it's a precast structure roughly 11 and 1/2 by 24 and 1/2 feet. And inside will be all of the pump controls and the electrical equipment, including an emergency generator located inside. The building has a, you know, it's, it's been designed to look like essentially a shed to fit into the neighborhood. It has fiber cement siding, sloped roof with asphalt shingles. And again, the electrical controls and the, and the generator will be installed inside. And then just one other component of this, because this is such a low-lying area, we need to elevate the structure to get it out of the 100-year floodplain. So the base elevation of the site in that location is roughly around elevation 8. The 100-year floodplain is elevation 11. So we, we need to get the critical components of the station, vis a vis the electrical equipment, three feet above the 100-year floodplain, so that's elevation 14. So in order to accomplish that, we have to do some mounding of the sites. We'll be bringing a clean fill, again, to elevate the structure and the station above the 100-year floodplain. And we've, we've included some plantings to help make the site look a little bit more appeasing, appealing to the neighborhood. And there is a small driveway to take, for vehicles to be able to operate and maintain the pumping station during the course of the day.
Okay.
That'll be paved, yes, sir. We did receive an order of conditions from Conservation Commission for this particular site, and I think that's noted in the application as well.
Okay.
Have any answering questions?
All right. Barbara, do you have any questions of the petitioner?
No, I don't.
John, do you have any questions of the petitioner?
No, just how is this site chosen? Is it the only one? I mean, is it the location for the pumping station, is the perfect location for it?
Well, I wouldn't say there's never a perfect location. It's always difficult to locate them. But as I indicated, you know, one of the first criteria, we look for town-owned properties, just so we don't have to take an easement or deal with private property owners. So this is, was a vacant town parcel. It is in, you know, although Southshore Drive is generally flat, it is in the lower portion of the, of the road. So that's, you know, we're trying to maximize the gravity service for the collection system, so that always flows to the low point in the area. So that, that's another reason why this particular location was chosen. It's sort of generally a low point in the area, so that it made sense to locate it here.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Jay?
I'm just curious, is the entire parcel, is it all one parcel that goes all the way over to Pine Grove Road from the right side of this, this parcel?
It is.
That's all town land? And why did you, why did you situate it so it's on the far end, which instead of more central to that piece?
That's a good question, because it is a parcel that the town could use for some other future purpose. We wanted to minimize the impact and maximize how much available space there was to do something in the future, being right next to the beach, you know, whether it's parking or...
Next to a motel next door, I think it is.
Correct.
So my concern is going to be around the, at minimum, it's going to be around the shrubbery that's going to be put around the place to try to disguise it as much as possible. So at some point, I'd like you to talk us through what you plan on doing that, because instead of having just the front open to be concerned about, now we have that side also. And I'm sure we want to disguise that as much as possible. So if you could speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. And if you look at the site plan, there is some existing vegetation that'll remain in place, so that there's already some natural screening there. We tried to minimize, you know, tried to leave some space on the side lot line so that we could minimize that visual impact. And you can see on the site plan, we do have a, you know, that's where the focus of the plantings are. There's a number of plantings along that sideline.
Which ones are new and which ones are to be implanted?
So the ones that are called out, the sort of dark, if you will, on the right-hand side, and there are some circle, you'll see where you have concentric circles with the labels called out. On the left-hand side, under the general notes, there is a plant list there. So that shows you the number and type of plantings along that side. Again, the main focus of the planting plan was, was on that side, as you said, where the...
Which is the planting, is this the planting plan, or is it the big, the other?
Do you have this one?
That's the big one?
That's it, yes, sir.
So the circles exist today, like the big circles?
No, those are all new, those are all new plantings. You'll, you'll see there are leaders that call out the various types of plantings, and that refers back to the planting plan table.
What diameter are, are those deciduous trees? Are they, I'm trying to find out where the, where's the...
It's a mix. It is a mix. So there's eastern red cedar, there's red sunset maple, there's service berry, peach plum, and a little blue stem standing ovation. And I apologize, I'm not a landscape architect.
Where's the, you mentioned there's a key to...
On the left-hand side of that, of that drawing, under the general notes, above the zoning notes, there's a plant list there. So it gives you the quantity, sort of the key. There's a two-letter designation for each plant type that's called out on the plan that's listed in the plant list.
I drove by, and it looked like you've already clear-cut the whole area, I believe. So it looked like it was fully open on that side. So I didn't see any, I didn't see much existing still there. Was there anything still there, or is it...
I think there's still some existing, still existing...
Okay. I didn't see much, that's why I was...
Not much.
Yeah. I guess I'd really like to encourage somehow as much additional plantings as possible, especially something that would, over time, give it, is there a problem with having height on some of those plantings?
No.
That won't disturb anything as far as the pumping...
No, it's too far, too far enough removed from the station itself, so that...
So I don't know if we, there's something we can do to make sure that there's height and coverage for, I think Dick Martin would really appreciate that, if nobody else...
Maybe we, maybe we could discuss a condition with a one-year return after it's all done for a review of the landscaping to determine if we need more landscaping. Just a thought.
That would be a fair thing to do, yes. I guess other than that, I mean, this is necessary. We really do need it. And I'm glad to see that it's getting started finally after how many years. But would have been, would have been nice if it could have been moved over and used the natural plantings to, to protect this rather than push it right on the edge of the property. I understand what you're trying to do.
Is this, is this going to create, generate any noise? Nothing?
The only noise would be periodically, the generator would have to get exercise, but that's something that, you know, just for a few minutes during the, during the middle of the day, nothing at night or anything.
There was a site plan review document that was put together. Is there anything in there that, that you felt was a problem to adhere to? I don't know.
No, I think we addressed those. So a couple of the comments, one was originally the bi-retention area, which is the stormwater treatment area. Part of that was located within the town right of way, so we revised that to move it back, so it's all on the property. There was a question about, about the plantings on the front side. It was suggested by the planning that we plant three deciduous trees on the front-facing Southshore Drive. We ended up putting five in that area rather than three. I think those were the main questions that were...
They weren't looking for the conifer type versus, I mean, to provide year-round...
The request was for deciduous. If there's a, is a, if there's a desire for a different type of planting, we can certainly look at...
That request come from, from the planning board, from Conservation?
That was from, that was from Kathy Williams from the plan, yes, yes. Those were her comments under community development planning.
And there's an antenna. It's 50 feet high, is that correct? It's 50 feet high, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's going to be on a, a standard telephone pole?
On a utility pole, correct. And that's to send the signals back to the treatment facility so that they can monitor the operation of the...
So there has to be remote monitoring rather than through telephone links or something like that?
Yeah, that's, the state-of-the-art technology is, is the radio wave so that it would get, you know, uninterrupted service back to the plant. And just because of where the site is located and the tree coverage in the area, it was determined, you know, we do a radio survey, it was determined that we needed to be...
You can't use regular wireless phone systems to do that?
It wouldn't, I don't, you wouldn't get the service that you need there.
Service goes down, you'd be shit out of luck, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, today it wouldn't work.
Service goes down for this, too, yeah.
Today wouldn't have a good day.
All right, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a question about any potential smell that will emanate from that building as a result of its operation. Can you speak to that?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, our experience has been, especially in an area like this where it's mostly domestic wastewater, the odors aren't an issue. One thing that we did do, however, for this particular, each of the stations in town, there is a separate room designated for odor control in the future if it's needed. So if it turns out that there is an issue, we've made provisions in the station to add odor control should it be needed in the future. So if you look at the architectural drawing on the floor plan, you'll see there's two separate rooms. There's a generator room, and again, that's where the, obviously, the generator and all the electrical equipment will be. There's another empty space that's designated for odor control so that should odors become a problem in the future, there's a way to, there'll be a way to handle that. But again, our experience has been, and our recommendation to the town was, it wouldn't be needed, but we wanted to, the town wanted to make sure we had provisions to add it in case it became an issue.
Because the reason that I ask that question is because you have prevailing southwest winds there in the summertime when everybody's down and all those houses out behind you. And so I, I just want to make sure that you're going to represent to this board that that's not going to be an issue and a nuisance for these people that are living out behind there. Is that your representation?
Understood. Again, that's been our experience, and yes, we've made provisions to address it if it does become an issue. But we have found in our experience with many similar facilities, similar pumping stations, that, that odors are not an issue.
Is there any other place this pumping station could go besides on that lot right there? Did you look at other sites? What other sites did you look at besides this one?
So we looked at actually several other sites. The original plan was to have two pumping stations down on South Shore Drive, one on either end. And we found that this site lent itself better to, to host this, the station. In addition to saving a significant amount of money in trying to locate two pumping stations, we wanted to centralize it and put it in one location. So we did look at some other sites, other, you know, there's a town-owned parking lot down to the east that was one site that was looked at. Again, it's, it would have required a second station on the other end to serve that part of the street, and there was no good location for that station.
But you definitely need a pumping station down in that area, though, is that correct?
This is a low-lying area, yes, sir, in order to get the flow up into Route 28, and then it'll get pumped again to get up to the treatment facility. But there's no other way to...
Where's the pipe going to run from the station to 28? What, what path is that going to take?
So the, the gravity sewers are, you know, obviously in South Shore Drive going to the pumping station, and then it's what we call a force main. So it's a pipe that comes out of the pumping station and it'll run parallel to the gravity sewer heading east, I'm sorry, west in South Shore Drive, and then north up Seaview. And then it ties into a gravity line just south of Route 28 in Seaview, and then flows by gravity to the next pumping station. So it'll be in, completely in the street.
Any further questions?
I haven't, I haven't had my chance, Mr. Chairman, so I do have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Dick, I'm sorry.
It's my understanding that you're here only because of the, the lack of a certified site plan? Is that correct?
No, sir. So this is in R25 zone, so municipal use requires a special permit.
Okay.
This is a municipal use...
But the applicant requests a waiver of the requirement for this, for the certified plot plan?
That was in addition because we had this site plan that shows the actual site and not the...
But it doesn't show any distances, does it?
No.
It doesn't show any, any, any...
Setbacks.
Setback, any setbacks of the building or anything from the street?
There's a table in the lower left-hand corner of that plan that should call out. Not that plan, so they...
Well, I think we're, we're used to seeing that. I don't see anything that delineates the distance from the building to any sideline.
So on the bottom left-hand corner of this...
I'm not going to figure that. Why should I do that? I, you know, it's always on the plan that we see. And I guess my question was, why couldn't there be a certified plot plan? You're doing all this work anyway. Is the, was, is the siding flexible? Is it going to be in a different spot?
The location of the station itself?
Yes.
No, it's going to be at the location that we've shown here. We have called out coordinates for all the critical facilities, the corners of the building and the driveway. So there, there are coordinates called out.
But none to the lot lines? And our concern here is zoning, and we can't be assured that it complies to zoning without setbacks. I mean, it looks like it's fine, but if we're going to put that onus on every other petitioner that comes before us, we shouldn't be showing any extra preferential treatment to the town who sets the rules. Is that correct?
Understood, yes. Our understanding was that showing the distances, the setbacks in the table, it does show the sideline and front lot line.
Every, I mean, I've been on this board for a long time, and I have never, ever seen a plan before us that doesn't show us the distance to the property lines for setback requirements.
Understood. I apologize, sir.
Is that something...
So it's in the, in the, in the middle of the lot, and it's going to be elevated up five feet?
Roughly, yes.
And the building is, is it, did you say it was a precast, the building?
It's precast concrete, but it will have siding on it to make...
Siding that's cement-based, that's going to look like cedar shingles?
Correct, sir.
And why was the whole lot strip cleared? I don't understand that. All the way over to Pine Grove Road? It looks like it's strip cleared to me.
It's, it's within the limits of this, of the site. I don't think it's all the way over to Pine Grove.
I don't know, pretty darn near. I just, you did a lot of things that we usually criticize developers for doing. And when the town does it, it reflects poorly when we try to defend the bylaw to future petitioners. That's my point. The same with the plot plan, the certified plot plan. The money that this project is costing, there should have been a certified plot plan for a few hundred dollars to get. I mean, that just doesn't seem to make sense to me.
Understood.
All right, that's all I have for the moment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It hasn't been a February 2nd, '24.
Yeah, that's interesting.
We're going to have to talk about that as a matter of fact, because I'm not, do we have elevations that we're seeing here? I see elevations for the street, I see elevations. Do you have a top of, any type of top of, what type of foundation you're going to have on this?
It's a slab-on-grade.
Do you have a top of foundation on this plan?
It's elevation 14.
Do you, is it on the plan?
On the site plan, it's actually called out as 13.98, yes.
That's what I think we ought to do. I have another question, too. Who gave you permission to clear that lot?
The town.
No, who gave you permission to clear that lot?
We talked with Mark Grills about that, and he said it was at the discretion of the town.
Okay. Okay.
On the architect, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, on the architectural drawing, if you look at the elevations, it does call out the finished first floor.
Excuse me, it's the discretion of the town to clear a lot. So you guys don't need a clearing permit? Do you have a clearing permit for that property?
No.
Okay. We're going to continue this hearing. Give us another date. I want a certified plot plan that shows all setbacks and elevations, top of foundations, where everything's going to be located. Okay? What do we have, Dolores, for another date we can give these gentlemen?
Hold on, Mr. Chairman.
Yep?
April 11th?
Okay, April 11th. I'd also like you to submit some type of documentation relative to this odor control, okay? We need that for our file. Can you do that for us?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So what's the new date?
April 11th.
April 11th, okay. Do we need them to sign an extension?
Yes. So we have the extension agreement ready, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll have them sign an extension agreement. Is there anything else that the board wishes to have the petitioner bring back at the next hearing besides a certified plot plan that shows the setbacks to all of the boundary lines as well as the elevation of the building?
I'd like to see a little bit more on the clarity as far as the plantings that are going to go in the front as well as the right side.
Well, we're going to have a review on that. That's going to be a condition, because we're going to look at this thing when it's done. And if we don't, we, if we don't think it's sufficient, we're going to require them to put more plantings in.
Okay.
And I am a little bit concerned about where this is. I don't know where it is, actually, but I know it's pretty close to the wind jammer.
Right next door.
And that, that's all that I have. And that odor control, I want some more information on that, because I'm very concerned about this building in the summertime emanating odors that are going to run right up into all of these neighborhoods. Now, having said that, we need a pumping station. If they're telling us they can do this one versus two, I think that's certainly a benefit. Okay, so is that all we need from the petitioner?
We need a motion.
I had one other question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Dick.
The petitioner alluded to the, the possibility for other use in the unused portion of that lot. Would there be security issues to seal that off from the rest of, say, there was a public parking area there? Would, would there need to be?
I think they're going to have to come see us if they're going to put a parking area there. This is in an R25 zoning district.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Is it fenced?
And I, I don't particularly think that they should be clearing any land until they have their permits.
Well, also, also since they're not going to be using that land, it seems stupid to strip it.
Well, we may, we may have them replanted.
I just want to clarify the clearing. The clearing was only done in the footprint shown on the plans. There was no strip clearing, only the areas that are disturbed, according to the plans, were cleared. So very limited clearing. Certainly wasn't cleared all the way to Pine Grove.
So Pine Grove is, is not cleared?
Correct.
The building right here and, and this area, I'm not there, unfortunately, but I'm looking at quite a large area, it seems. I know you need room for construction, I'll, I'll certainly concede that. So, but I, well, that'll be subject to a review. And at the conclusion of this site being built, if we approve it, then we can readdress the issue of what needs to be replanted after you're done building this.
Sean, just to let you know, I did drive down today and kind of walk the area, and they didn't clear all the way to Pine Grove. It's, it's cleared pretty much as outlined on this, which, the whole, the whole lot is much, much bigger. That's why I was asking about why it couldn't have been shifted over a little bit, which would have been more in the, in the center of it.
I can see, I can see why they would want to reserve some town-owned property. I think that...
I'm just letting you know that it wasn't fully cleared. That's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah. But I, I think Dick is right, you know, I, I think the town needs to, the town tends to have a habit of doing what they want to do and then coming and asking us for relief afterwards. I can give you a few examples if anybody wants to hear. The latest one was the school, when they came over and needed a variance to put the building there, and they had, I think, already half-done. I don't know why they wouldn't have come to us beforehand. What if we said no? All right? Not that we were going to, all right, that was a reasonable request, but I think the town should be more in compliance with what's required of all petitioners, as Dick said. Okay? The town should be held to any other standard but what the standards that we hold for everybody. Having said that, if there's no more questions or...
Just wanted to make a comment that, you know, I, this is obviously the place that this should be. I don't have any problem with voting to have the pumping station there. It's, it's needed, it's going to have to be if we're going to have sewage on, on South Shore Drive. And I don't think there's any opposition to the, to the overall plan, but once again, as, as Sean mentioned, it gets a little annoying to see the town come back time after time without conforming to the own, their own regulations. And it just makes it very hard for us to defend the regulations to the public when the town doesn't comply. So that's why.
Okay. I, I do think that we are, I, I think Dick makes a good point. I think he, he's reflecting the consensus of the board as well. I, I do think we, we know we need this. We are going to approve it once we get the necessary information that we need. And I think it's a much better idea having one pumping station versus the idea of two. But we will need that information, and if you can bring that back to us, we'll see you on April 11th.
Sean, we might have some people here that wanted to speak.
Okay. If we have people in our audience that wish to speak, we'll go to the audience. If anybody wishes to speak in opposition to this, please come to the microphone.
Thank you very much. My name is Eileen Kearns Redfield. I've been a resident of 202 Pine Grove Road for 30-plus years. My front yard was decimated by the town because my neighbors encroached on town land. And now the, my front yard is going to be a pumping station. I'm all for the sewage, I'm all for the pumping station, but they're decimating my front yard in one way or another. And I'm worried about the odor, I'm worried about water flow, I'm worried about backup. There's no, the erosion this winter on the beaches on South Shore Drive is huge. And I don't think there's been enough consideration to the people who live in the budding area to what this impact could have long-term. So I, I'd need to know who to contact to find this whole plan, because I came home, I was taking a walk, I came home, and half the trees in front of my yard were gone. And I didn't know anything about it. So the communication needs to be opened up and the discussion needs to be further addressed. All of my neighbors have contacted us, we're year-round, they are not, and there's a big concern in our area. So I just wanted to put that into everybody's mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Either in favor or opposition? Seeing none, okay? All right, gentlemen, is there anything else that you'd like to add at this time?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so why don't we see you on, what is it, April 11th?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we need to make a motion.
Let me ask you a question before you leave. Is this going to hold up your, is this going to hold up your project by continuing this matter till April 11th? Is this going to make a material delay in it?
No, it, it shouldn't, but just so the board is aware, we are scheduling a groundbreaking ceremony at this location for March 14th. And so I just want to suggest that, that that's awkward timing situation.
You're right.
But with regards to delay, the contractor is working on this contract currently, but the pump station is something that is not first on the list to be worked on.
That's our next meeting date, the 14th.
What's our next meeting date?
It's continued, right?
Is the funding in place?
Yeah.
The funding's in place, yes.
Even though we're not getting reimbursed?
We're getting reimbursed through the State Revolving Fund.
I thought there was an issue with the amount of money that was available and the percentages.
No.
No.
Dolores, what, whatever, what's the next date in March?
Okay, um, it is, well, you've got six on March 14th.
And you guys are having a, you guys are having a ceremony over there on the 15th? Well, nothing's going to happen, right?
14.
The 14, it's just ceremonial.
Yeah. Okay, well, I tell you what, why don't, if, if it's not going to hold you up a lot, then we're going to keep you on the April 11th to come back with that, because those things are going to be necessary, because we need to know exactly where that building is going to be located. I think that's going to be our biggest concern. The other stuff, if you can get that for us, like I said, we want that odor control, but I, I trust your representation that that would be sufficient. So why don't we just do that? We'll keep you on that agenda. I think we'll get you guys everything that you need. I think we are, are in favor of it, but I think that we need to abide by some rules, and I don't think that we would have done this for a private petitioner, and I don't think we should begin doing it for the town. But thank you very much, we'll see you on April 11th.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Dolores, do we have minutes we need to approve?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, January 25th.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Dick wasn't here, but everyone else was.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 25th?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from January 25th.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor to approve the minutes of January 25th, 2024, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain, Mr. Chairman.
Pardon me?
I'll abstain, since I wasn't here.
Okay, all right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
You have a second on that one?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Everybody, thank you very much, we'll see you all at the next meeting.
Thank you, Sean.
Mr. Chairman.